But yeah, that's what they're saying and they're saying.
Okay, today is Wednesday, June fourth, the time is six fifteen P M. Going to open this council public hearing. And Jacob, I believe that it's over to you.
Yes. So this is a quasi judicial. Subject of this year is the request for annexation. The subject property is identified on the Columbia County map as lot three thousand on map four north one minus eight B. The applicant is Greg and Amanda McFerrin, and the owner is the same. Because quasi judicial proceedings require the observance of certain procedural formalities, we must take a few moments to cover some preliminary matters and required statements. So the member of the council wish to declare a potential for actual conflict of interest or bias in this matter. Does any member of the council wish to declare any ex parte communications or side business? Does anyone from the audience want to get the ability of the council to make a fair decision? So generally, the order of the proceedings will be as follows, required statements, which I'm doing, staff report, which I'll do after the statements. And then the applicant's presentation if they choose. And then public testimony, those beginning with those neutral, those opposed, any rebuttal by the applicant. Any final questions, close of the record deliberations and decision. Following statements are required to be made in commencement of the annual pursuant city code and O R S one ninety seven, seven ninety seven subsection five. Following is the applicable substantive criteria for this decision, seeing homes municipal code seventeen oh eight zero four zero seventeen twenty zero three zero. And seventeen one one two zero three zero. Testimony arguments and evidence must be directed towards the applicable substantive criteria as described or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or land speculation. What the burden will give supplies to the decision. Failure to raise an issue, including constitutional or other issues related to the conditions of approval in this hearing, in person or writing, or failure to raise an issue or publicly found statements. Division to afford the approving authority and opportunity to respond to the issue. Guilty legal aid is for appeal on that issue and precludes an action for damages in circuit court. So this is an annexation. And it's an annexation probably unlike I'll deal with ever again. It's a it's an older one. This one goes back to two thousand. And this came up because a sewer use agreement that has this five year renewal interval. It's a renewal that I think was before the city engineer. I don't recall ever seeing it. So when it came up again from our city recorder, it was sent to our engineering manager and myself, so I got looking at it. And we'd already started working on or plan to start working on this year's batch of annexations. It was like huh, well, this is kind of interesting. Maybe we should try to clean this up. And it's it's kind of weird because the sewer use agreement from that time period. Talks about the property being almost adjacent to city limits. And the subject property is here. And what the statute says is talks about adjacencies, adjacency to city limits or being separated by body of water or public right of way. And in this case, it's so the property, the closest property to city limits, you can see that red line there is to the east or to the right. And it's about a seven seventy foot distance between the corner of the property to the approximate closest point of the city limit line. So I was looking at that huh, well, it's it's adjacent. And it's still the same property owner. So I had some dialogue with the owner, kind of talked about it. And you know, at the time, they seemed to be open to it. Now, because the history is kind of weird, it's something, you know, if you feel like it should be denied. You know, I don't think it's something we're we're going to fight and they're here to talk about it if they so choose. But what made this one kind of different is so they wanted to understand what that meant for them. Now, the advantages for them, I think probably the biggest one is their utility bill. If you're outside city limits, the rate is multiplied by two. And so that's something that helped them. I know they take a lot of pride in operating in their yard, just talking to them and seeing their site. And so that's something relevant to them. And then also down the road, at least currently, the city's rules are more flexible as far as having a second dwelling unit on the property. It's outright permitted use for us could be detached attached. So you know, maybe sometime that'll matter to them in the future. We do have a discussion about which zoning to pick. So whenever we have an annexation, we look at our comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan is what guides us to pick a zoning designation. And sometimes it's easy, you know, we just have one, we don't have to think about it. In this case, we have to think a little bit about it. The choices based on this comprehensive plan designation would be R seven or R ten. Those are our lowest density zoning districts. Our ten is a ten thousand lot minimum, our seven is seven thousand minimum. And you can see to the east there, properties around Evergreen Loop. You see a yellow color, not a light yellow color, and that's because it's zoned R seven. The the lot is around twenty thousand square feet. So it probably doesn't change the visibility that much, and they have a big house on there anyways, or a house that fills up the lot. So it's, you know, dividing it in its developed state is is not too practical. So there's, I don't think a lot of consequence either way for them, but the planning commission recommended R seven. Just based on the pattern of their zoning in that area. And as we look at some of these old annexations, you know, this is the same owner. They understand what happened back then, and as we look to clean up some of these old files. It's good when it's the same owner. It's a good time to to look at these because they have the context of why. So the planning commission reviewed it. They recommended approval. So I should note, the owner was not here for the planning commission meeting. Of course, we are here now, so. That's the bulk of what I wanted to talk about on this one. Questions of staff before we open it up for public testimony.
Okay.
So would you like to speak? As the petitioner, and you don't, you're not obligated to, you don't have to.
No, that's fine. It's okay, please come to the table and state your name.
Amanda McFerrin. Okay, so then we had talked, you know, Jacob and I had talked about this and when he called and contacted us and we'd talked about the step program and how property wasn't completely annexed in, only our sewer line was annexed in. And as he stated, you know, the financial burden on us, I pulled our sewer records and water records and we've paid over sixteen thousand dollars double. Then what we should have been paying had we been annexed in four. So it would be a great thing to have that done and not be paying, you know, four or five hundred dollars in the summer months for my water and sewer bill because they're doubled. And the other thing I don't know about is, and I was going to ask, if our property gets annexed into the city, does that five year recurring still stand on the sewer? Because the sewer line, from my understanding, the reason that they did it on a five year at the beginning was so that if ever sewer came down our road, we couldn't keep our private line, we would have to attach to the permanent sewer line. So does that still remain in effect, that five year renewal or that sewer line that would protect the homeowner and the city from having another private line if an actual sewer line was put there?
Yeah, that's a good question. Of course, being within city limits, you'd be subject to city law. One of the provisions of city law talks about if public sewer is within a certain distance. And it's hundred something, I think, it's been a while since I read that. But if it's within a certain distance, then you're supposed to connect to it. So I would assume that that could apply to a normal sewer line versus the step. Would it, but our code also talks about when you have a step system, have some some type of user agreement. I don't think it specifies a five year term. And if this annexation goes through, I think it would be a further discussion with our engineering department and how we want to retailer that agreement. The annexation part is done.
Right.
So it could change that.
Because we we would wholeheartedly get rid of the septic that we have to deal with now, and I mean, we have to go in and clean out the the septic pump system twice a year, and that's a nasty mess. So to get rid of that and hook up to sewer would be a great thing for us, and it wouldn't be an issue for us to do. But you know, if that never happens by the time we sell the property, whenever that is, if something would need to be in place for the future owners to. So I just kind of wanted to make sure how that would affect that five year term now.
Yeah, and and we haven't discussed it. I wanted to see how this played out, see how we.
Is every property on the street have the same situation with their own sewer lines?
No.
Uh, no, this this property, it's it's interesting, it's it's a step system that goes back to the to the late nineties. And if if you look at the annex, the annex pattern around there, you can see that city limits is kind of splotchy. And those are properties that have connected as their systems have failed. Usually people aren't, yeah, take me in. Every once in a while, they want to use our rules. But usually they don't, they, you know, they just want to keep it themselves. But when they have that utility problem, that's been the vast majority of our annexations over the last.
Our septic line to begin with went from our was seventeen hundred and seventy feet. So it went from our house down for up for Lot Park and down Gable to attach to the newer sewer line. So those new sewer lines that have come in and are there, as those new homes were built on the properties, they brought the sewer line down. And so it stopped right up at the top there, so. And I guess it's because of gravity or flow that we're lower than what they are, so they can't service based off of the way it's set up now.
So they have the the step system, which is the septic tank affluent pump system. So they have a tank and a pump which pumps it up. And that's the maintenance that she's referring to.
So it would be nice to get rid of that, but it would also be nice to, like I said, not be paying double and look at the simple fact that we've paid almost sixteen thousand five hundred dollars extra over the last twenty years, twenty three years in sewer and water bills because we're a county property.
Anyone want to testify in support of this application? Support. Anyone want to testify in neutral of this application?
I do. My name is Agnes Peterson and my post office box is seven forty eight in Saint Helens, Oregon. And I think that you should table this and any annexation where the signed document is more than a year old. And that's because of state law. I brought with me for you a series of documents that you can look at or not. But one is the paper that was signed by these folks. And if he's having conversations with these folks, he certainly invited them to sign a recent request. And that's the first document that I have here. And so if you look where I marked it in orange, it was nineteen, I think ninety nine, and Jacob said that it started in two thousand. Well, there's a state law that requires something to be done with a request like this within one year unless there's a waiver. I'm not going to cite you the law, but within that other document, there's a bunch of laws. So my recommendation is you table this. If any of these annexations have been signed more than a year ago. And you invite the woman who wants to, the property owner who wants to be annexed, to sign a new request, which is within the one year. And the reason I came here tonight, we went through a hearing in front of the planning commission, and that's the other document. And they canceled that. Planning Commission, as I understand it, recommended, I'm not sure what they recommended, I can't seem to get the notes, but it's either that it be denied or that it that they take no action. That one was a paper signed by Paul Joe in two thousand and nine. They brought it up this year. That's too long. And in addition to that, there were four different property owners along. That doesn't make any difference other than the law is set forth in that document. Now, why do you have me, who, when you canceled the hearing, come? Well, this is why I believe in good, transparent government. And I don't believe in getting documents signed twenty five years ago or sixteen years ago and then coming and asking for a extension of the property of Saint Helens, Oregon. Now I can sympathize with the property owner. All she has to do is file a new request and present it again. But at the, under the present circumstances, I think it's just wrong, wrong, wrong for you to go ahead and act on an annexation request that is over a year old. And I mean, twenty five years and twenty five years ago, oh, God, I wish I were twenty five years younger. You know, that would be a wonderful thing. That's all I have to say. Thank you for letting me be here.
There any other neutral testimony?
Hi, my name is Mary Ann Anderson, and I guess I'm here as neutral. As Agnes said, we went through the hearing with the planning commission on the Paul Joe slash now J H rentals property. I learned a lot about annexation during that period of time. And that's now been canceled presumably because the documents are expired. And I think the city actually has quite a problem if they attempt to go back in time all these years based on the statute that they're relying on, they're relying on O R S two 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 one two seven. And even if you don't say that document has expired, that statute did not come into effect until twenty sixteen. And it has a forward looking language in it that says upon receipt of a petition for annexation, i.e. from twenty sixteen forward. So you know, your assistant here was indicating that you were quote, trying to clean up old files. And you were looking around in those old files, I guess, to do these annexations that existed long ago. And if you look at the purposes and the way that annexations typically happened, it was either the property owner coming in and saying, I really want to annex, what can I do? Or it was the city saying, we're going to take in a territory now. And they had to either get the consents of all those people and half of the electorate. And then they had to have an election. That's what your charter says. That's what state law said until twenty sixteen. So I think if you're going to clean up your old files, what you want to start with is taking every single one of those files that has these old annexation documents in them and pitching them out if they predate the state law on which your staff is relying to proceed with these. And finally, the I I don't, I can't really tell if the applicant here is in favor or against. I think it partly depends on what is decided about her sewer. And so I think it's a really good suggestion that you wait and sort that out so you don't annex her. And then time goes on and nothing happens and she still has this problem that she's talking about. People ought to be able to tell what's going to happen when something like this happens to them. Thank you so much.
Any other testimony in neutral? We have the opportunity to any neutral testimony? Okay. Testimony in opposition? Okay. I can explain the the one year limitation. So I agreed to waive the one year limitation on this consent established by O R S two 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 one seven three in that this consent shall be effective and continue until annexation to the city. To the city of Saint Helens occurs, signed and notarized by Amanda and Greg McFerrin, November nineteen ninety nine. So we have the document. I I it was an item less on my radar before that, so it wasn't in the packet. But I know what happened with things. The one year waiver is on the this, so there's the petition and then there's this electors consent. And that's where the waiver lived. And because I was here when when things happened. And so it was my own fault. Because I'm, well, it's a commercial property. I don't have to worry about this other one. Now I realize, oh, that was an error. And so, yeah, the Bing's annexation is is kaput. And that's why we canceled it. But we do have the waiver for this particular application.
You can see it. She gave us a copy of it. I think she did. We didn't, I don't think we have like, no, this isn't.
This, this document, because it wasn't part of the.
So that's different than this one.
Right, this is the original.
This is, that's, that's the petition. This is the electors consent, which includes the one year waiver that is being referred to. So that is that is in the file.
Was this discussed with the planning commission?
No. It didn't come up until the third public hearing and the Bing's one was the third one.
What was it discussed? The fact that there was already a waiver that has been.
Well, just the one year limitation was not discussed at all.
And it can make this decision that they made. Does the waiver circumvent the current law? That's, I'm not a lawyer, so does it, does that actually?
Well, there's, they're saying that the annexation consents that are old without the waiver are worthless. And
Have we verified that with our legal team?
That makes sense. Yes, that was a question. That was one of my prime questions to talk to them about.
You haven't yet, or you have?
The waiver, yes.
You did. And what did they say?
And that's why I decided that suing the Bing's annexation was going to be a waste of time. And so it was withdrawn because of the lack of the waiver in that case.
One of us canceled tonight did not have the waiver.
Yes.
Yep.
That's the waiver.
Yeah.
Legal found that acceptable.
I didn't talk to legal about this particular file, but just about that law.
I mean, it's hard, you get, I also don't think that the planning commission had all the information make the decision, which we tend to lean with their decisions. But I I don't think it's fair that they didn't have this information presented to them.
Well, I I think it's it's a simple matter. Do you have the one year waiver or not? And we do.
I don't quite understand the one year waiver, though.
Okay.
And I'm not quite understanding the legalities of it, so I personally don't feel comfortable moving forward without understanding that.
Well, let me explain it. So the petition to annex, there's there's a stipulation in the law says, so typical reason for an annexation is a connection to sewer. So they filed a petition with the city. And that state law says that petition is valid for a year. Which means the city has to act on it quickly. In the Bing's case, the Bing's property was not adjacent to city limits until last year. So it couldn't annex, it was too far away. Now, the one year limitation doesn't apply if it is waived. So you need that second document that says that the person petitioning or the entity petitioning also says we waive this one year limitation. Unfortunately, back in two thousand nine or so, we did not get that for the Bing's property. And when they looked at it for their clients, they identified that, and then we realized, oh, yeah, that's a fatal flaw. So in this case, yes, it's true, we have a quarter century old petition to annex. But we also have that waiver here.
Really stupid question, but why is just not a new petition submitted? When that resolved?
Potentially, we were just it wasn't really something we thought about when we started it. We had this one, we had a conversation with the property owner.
So I guess that I come back, if this is us cleaning up our file and we are going to be exploring other opportunities or the properties that come up, like are we setting a precedence where we're going to just take waivers for all these properties that are prior? I mean, I haven't read it, but allegedly two thousand sixteen, or are we going to have them repetition? Like, I think this is kind of like a case law precedence we're setting right now, right?
It's kind of weird to me that it didn't get denied back then and then discarded and then replied.
That was never.
That it didn't get completed back then.
Well, he he is saying that it couldn't be approved back then, right?
No, 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 no. It it could have, and it really should have been processed back in two thousand. The weird thing is in the agreement, the staff, people who developed it said it was almost adjacent to city limits. When I looked at it, I'm like, well, this is adjacent to city limits. When I looked at it, I'm like, well, this is adjacent to city limits, so we should pursue it. Um and in this case, we have the two things that we need. We have the petition and the waiver of the one year rule. And and most of our annexations do, um as far as I know, the Bing's one or the family fun R V is one of those exceptions.
I just, I'm having a hard time understanding. So it sounds like you're saying that the previous staff member, not you, that looked at it, said it's too far away. So it should have been denied and discarded from the file.
That was not an annex, that was not an annexation proceeding. That was in a sewer use agreement.
So that was separate then. So I'm really confused.
All all I'm saying is if you felt like you didn't want to approve it and the owner, based on the testimony, was getting sheepish about it, you could use that as a way out.
There's no sheepish. I've never said sheepish.
Yeah, based on what happens at the hearing, because we, you know, the decision is not final until we have the hearing.
I get it. We thought it had been done until I got a letter in the mail and I went, what the hell is this?
You never realized that you were not annexed into the city? You just assumed you were annexed into the city?
When, yeah, because they kept giving us this five year annexation thing. So we're thinking, okay, this is just the way it's going to roll until all of this happens. So, you know, until Jacob had either sent the letter or called or I called them back when I got the letter and said, wait. And he goes, yeah, you were never, your property was never annexed in with the set or the the step program. Only your sewer line was, but we've got this. Let's get it done. Okay, great. Let's get it done.
Yeah.
And then based on the hearings that we had last time, um making sure that in this case, we did have um that one year waiver.
So this is an issue. You want to be annexed.
Yes.
She's applied to be annexed. The document's been signed that waives the one year right, so why can't we annex then?
Exactly. I mean, it sounds like it's our mistake. Somebody dropped the ball in not finishing it when it happened initially, and we never realized. I mean, I'm not a a legal attorney or anything like that. When I signed my papers and they said, okay, this is what's going to happen. And you're going to get these re-annexation notices for five years until you hook up to sewer. We sign our papers and send them in every five years and did not realize, did not know that the property itself hadn't been annexed in. And I assumed because we were technically outside this, you know, the city limits. It wouldn't matter if it was annexed in or not, that my sewer bill and my water bills were as high as they were, when in fact, that's not the case.
So the what I think what makes this a little more confusing is the fact that they have this step system. And that step system is why there's this sewer use agreement. Our law talks about when there's a step system that um there can be a sewer use agreement. So that can be a phenomenon of the step system, um regardless of being in or out of the city. The actual annexated annexation proceeding has never occurred until now. And that was based on um me looking at that document going, hmm, we should probably look at this. And here we are.
Still have that reservation on having legal counsel opine whether that waiver is sufficient or not.
And I think that if if we do ask them to reapply, and that is what we decide to do, I definitely think we need to waive the fees for that. That's not fair. Here's the sixteen thousand four hundred and forty-three dollars I've paid extra in sewer and water bills. Doing the right thing is the right thing. Obviously, whoever was sitting in the office in nineteen ninety-nine, when I was going through this whole thing, that didn't complete what they needed to complete and get it taken care of, that's not my fault. I had no cause in that. I signed everything I needed to sign. My husband signed everything we needed to sign. Somebody dropped the ball, and so y'all should just make it right. It's not my fault that that didn't happen. It's not like I neglected to do something that I needed to do at that point in time. I did everything I was asked to do.
Yeah, and I understand. It could be very confusing. Half the time, I've been sitting up here a long time and I still sit up here like, huh? Didn't you just say? So that that is not fair, in my opinion.
Yeah, I agree with that. I'm still also concerned on how many hidden links we have in the grass on these files that we may run across in the city. And I have a bit concerned on setting precedents where I just wish that we did have legal counsel that could make a a decision on whether that waives any type of law by having the waiver.
It's pretty specific. I agree to waive the one year time limitation on this consent established by O R S two, 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 one, seven, three, and that this consent shall be effective and continue until annexation to the city of St. Helens occurs. That statute is still the same, two, 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 one, seven, three. So, you know, you could um either just deny it or or um the cleanest thing would be asking us to withdraw it. Um or you can continue the hearing to a um date and time certain if you want an answer. Someone's with the right initials behind their name. Or you can um rely on the fact that this one year waiver was done.
Still have to get another petition. Uh, Counselor Hubbard. Got it.
I think everything started a lot of the annexes to go forward. Got the waiver that's required. They want the property annex. I don't see what the issue is.
We're running out, too. And and I should say, we're still in the public hearing. Um we're not in deliberations. So we're gathering facts and that's okay.
Step then?
I have a question. What happens if there's a, if this petition's withdrawn and a new petitions um new positions petitioned? Does it start the process all over again?
Yeah, we could just start it over.
Yeah, but how long? How how much work and how much time is that? Involved?
I don't know. I don't know. I'm about to um have a staff reduction. And I don't know. It 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 could be quick. It could be. Yes.
We could do a continuance, though, and just ask for legal advice to ensure that what we're doing is setting a precedence and it would be acceptable. And we could just do a continuance so that we're not having to do a new petition right now or anything of the sort. Protecting the petitioner and the city.
Yeah, we could um continue the public hearing to a um date and time certain, then we don't have to re-advertise. And um I would recommend more than two weeks. Which um because of July second being out, that would put us to the second meeting in July.
Yes, I'm just trying to understand if the waiver has been signed and it was signed at the time it was done. It wasn't an afterthought. Everything was done all when it should have been done.
I think for me, it's just the legal aspect. I'm not a lawyer, like for me personally, I'm just, I'm not a lawyer. And I think that we're probably going to see more of these as we continue to clean up properties in the city. And I think this is setting a precedent. So I think, again, not having to re-petition and just get, seek advice on whether this waiver works, then this could also set a precedent for anybody else that, you know, is in the same situation, whether it's five years or ten years or another twenty-five years that it's been here that we could do that. Because it doesn't, I mean, it just delays it a few weeks, essentially.
Yeah, or or it may delay a a new process. And then on how things shake out.
Let me make a suggestion.
And that would be up to them if they want to continue.
You don't want to testify. I just, why don't you just have her sign a new petition and be done with it?
And if and you could direct staff to withdraw this application and start over, you know, that's
I think that that's what Counselor Gunnerson was requiring is what is that, you know, overly burdensome or cumbersome? Is it simply drafting a new document?
We could do that tomorrow.
Right.
Yeah, so then the the new documents get done. Um after all this, probably want to have those documents reviewed, um just to make sure they're updated to be safe.
So does that mean that now I need to go back and get an attorney that worked with me on all of this from the get go? And now I'm going to have to go incur more costs because of this?
Be your cost. Yeah, we would be working for that, yeah.
I understand that you'd be working on your documents, but if if that new document is not identical to the document that I've signed with counsel behind me.
I see.
That means that, guess what? You're waiting for your counsel. Now I'm going to have to go out and incur more costs. I already spent not just the money that was paid extra to the city or the water in the sewer over these years, but over a hundred thousand dollars just to get my house to where I could live in it.
They had quite the battle years ago, so.
Well, I can, I'm not recommending a full review of the documents. I'm recommending just an opinion on whether a waiver like is satisfactory for this current situation.
Yeah, so then, so those are the things to think about. Um if if we want to continue the public hearing, we would want to continue it um now. If you want to um not do that and make some type of decision, then um you'd close the public hearing and um deliberate. Now, we could continue it to the next June meeting. Um we see if we can get an answer in that time. And if, you know, go from there. Uh, I think you have a lot of meetings going on and I know there's urban renewal meeting at the next council council meeting.
I she's spent a lot of extra money, sixteen thousand dollars, you know, extra than what she has needed to. So I I want to see this annexation work. I just want to make sure that this the council is covered legally and that's it. I I would, I mean, if it wasn't that question, all of a sudden we have a waiver, it would not be a question for me. But because of the fact of just for share liability, I just want that simple question answered. So I'd like to do it personally.
I think that if the lawyer looks over the waiver, that would be, you know, just viable, just making sure that the waiver protect the city and move forward. That's it. If the law hasn't changed, that's noted in that waiver. And that waiver states there is no expiration date. What is there to question?
I think that's the question. We're not lawyers. So for us to opine whether it applies to any law or or S, I mean, we just got handed a packet of stuff that, I mean, there's no feasible way for us to read through it. And I think it comes back to, for me, just doing the due diligence, right? Want it to work out for you. It makes complete sense. But I also, if we're going to set a precedence, it would be nice to know that, like, anybody else that wants to annex in that this situation, it's like we know automatically that, you know, Jacob can, you know, work and do one of these waivers. And and then it's just, it makes it simpler on everybody else as long as we can do that. So that's why I think a continuance and just asking the question.
Hubbard, Gunnerson?
Could prove it was subject to attorney's approval.
Yeah, that's option.
I'm I'm hearing more like, more like listen, um we're dealing with also someone's been dealing with a hardship.
A great significant hardship.
Pushing us down the road. We want an attorney to look at it. We can agree that we can pass this. An attorney needs to give it the approval and then done deal.
I like that, too.
Sure, yeah.
So
Make that part of your decision.
Close this public hearing and deliberate later. Alright.
Thank you.
Alright, today is Wednesday, June fourth, twenty twenty-five. The time is now six fifty-nine, I think. Uh, and we're going to open this council public hearings.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. This is a quasi judicial land use hearing. The subject of this hearing is a request for an annexation of such a property as identified in the county status report. Twenty-one hundred and twelve north, one west, eight D B D. The applicant is Bradford, the owner is Bradford and Teresa Pyle. Because quasi judicial proceedings require the observance of certain certain procedural formalities, we must take a few moments to cover some preliminary matters and required statements. Does any member of the council wish to declare a potential or actual conflict of interest or bias in this? Does any member of the council wish to declare next part take on communication or site visit? Does anyone from the audience want to affect the ability of the counselor to make a fair decision? Generally, the order of the proceedings will be as follows. Require a signature staff report, applicant's presentation, those in favor of the application. Neutral testimony, those opposed rebuttal by the applicant. Questions, deliberations, and decisions. The following statements are required to be made at the commencement of the hearing pursuant to the code O R S one nine seven seven nine seven five. Following is a list of applicable substantive criteria for this decision. State and health is the quote seventeen zero eight zero four zero seventeen one twenty eight zero three zero and seventeen one one two zero three zero. All testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the applicable substantive criteria as described or other criteria in the conference of plan or land use regulation, which the person believes applies to the decision. Uh, failure to raise an issue, including constitutional or other issues related to the proposed conditions of approval in this hearing, in person or in writing, or failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the approval, authority, and opportunity to respond to the issues, precludes appeal to Luba, land use board appeals on that issue, and precludes inaction for damages in circuit court. This is a much more straightforward annexation because it is um it's current, believe it or not. Um, so this is one along um burlaque, kind of close to this one. As you can see, um there's several properties that were annexed to the north of it, and those have been passed annexations kind of just like this one. Um, this is a consent from August. Um, we do have the one year waiver, but we don't need it in this case. Um, the planning commission recommends approval. Um, the owner started calling us earlier this year asking about the status, and luckily, we already started working on the application to tell them um that uh it was in process. And why were they calling? Utility rates. They want that lower utility rate. Um, planning commission recommends approval. There's only one zoning option. In this case, apartment residential, so we don't have to talk about that. Um, I don't see any controversy with this one because it is one of our current ones, which ninety percent of the time, I don't, they aren't. So uh any questions from the council on this one? Um, is there anybody? So we're going to open it for public testimony. Um, anyone who wants to support the application and the applicant. So support of this annexation. Uh, neutral testimony in for this annexation.
Mary Ann Anderson. I feel like I threw a wrench into your record and I want to correct it. There are two separate issues. One is the one year expiration question. Which problem you don't have in this previous case, you don't have in this one because it's twenty twenty-four. And this is the way annexations are supposed to work timely. But since you want to set a precedent that's going to work going forward, the second issue that I raised, and I think it's solvable in this case with respect to, not this case, but the one before. I think that you could solve that by construing her testimony in favor of annexing as a reaffirmation of the pre-existing petition and grant it that way. But with respect to the overall issue, the second question is whether you're in compliance, whether you're using a law that you're entitled to use to do annexations. And the law is not the one about the one year rule. It's the one that was enacted two, 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 seven. And that one, the language says two, 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 one, two, seven. I misspoke. It says, notwithstanding a contrary provision of a city charter or city ordinance. And the reason it has to say that is because the default is It says notwithstanding a contrary provision of a city charter or city ordinance, and the reason it has to say that is because the default is you have to have an election. So this law is saying, we're saying now that even if you have a city ordinance that says you must have an election. Upon receipt. Upon receipt of a petition proposing annexation of territory subject, and then it goes on. So the issue is. Does upon receipt of a petition? Mean you go back twenty five thirty years into your files and say, oh, well, we have these petitions that were filed twenty five years ago. Now we've received them, and I don't think there is any non laughable way to interpret this. To mean you go back beyond the time the statute was enacted. To find things that you want to annex. So I caution you going forward that if you're getting staff reports saying, well, we have the documents in the file. Look at the date. Look at the date on the documents, and if it predates the statute. Go ask the people who own the property. Do you want to be annexed? Because at least in our client's situation, the property had changed hands three or four times, and all of the owners who were being annexed objected. And I don't know how many times that's happened in the last few years, but it's something that really ought to be stopped. Thank you.
Um, any more mutual testimony on this matter? Any testimony in opposition of? I believe the public testimony. Has concluded. Any final questions of the council?
Does this applicant want to be annexed into the city?
As I said, they they called. Um, and want that lower rate. Now they're not here, so you have to rely on. My word. And so this is just a question deliberation will happen. Um, as part of regular session. If you don't have questions, you can, um, close the hearing.
Great, well, we will close this, uh, public hearing. Okay, today is Wednesday, June fourth, twenty twenty five. The time is now seven oh six P M. Going to call this council regular session to order. Uh, we don't have any hometown heroes to celebrate this week, so if you will all join me with the pledge of allegiance.
Allegious to the flag. One nation and under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so now it's time for visitor comments that are related to city business or an issue on today's agenda and to provide information to the city councillors for consideration. The visitor comment period is a central part of local government meetings. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less and address your comments to the mayor and council members. If a person speaking during visitor comments may offer objective criticism of the city's business. The council will take into input related to city business and agenda items into consideration. However, in observant or in observant of Oregon open meeting laws, this isn't a time for dialogue, but rather a time for us to listen to you. Defamatory comments directed at anyone, including staff members, will not be permitted. A defamatory statement is a false statement of fact that harms a person's reputation. There are complaint procedures for consideration of a legitimate complaint involving a staff member. Any comment or complaint of a staff member should be sent to the city administrator who will forward it uh, to the employee and their supervisor. Any legitimate complaints will be handled in accordance with city policy. We also request you refrain from inappropriate comments or behaviors. Examples of these are attempting to engage in individual council members in conversation. Insult, obscenity or profanity, attacks against any person in their personal capacity, physical violence or threats of physical violence. Our city administrator and city reporter are taking notice of action. If needed, will follow with you. Responses to visitors' comments, if needed, will be published in the next city council work session packet. Uh, provided by the city attorney has had an opportunity to review the responses. Please provide contact information on the sign in sheet in the back of the room. And we'll have the first person come up. Please speak your or say your name for the record. See you sliding.
Evening, Jenny Gilbert, resident. Actually, I wrote what I was going to say tonight. I am here to thank Lieutenant Hoag for his twenty eight years of service. As residents, as residents of this community, we value honesty and loyalty. I am here tonight as a citizen not to stir conflict, but to remind this council that retaliation, political silencing and manipulative behavior will not go unnoticed or unchallenged. The community is watching you more closely than ever. We see what's happening and we are not afraid to speak up. Lieutenant Joseph Ho gave nearly three decades of service to this city. He was loyal and respected. What happened to him wasn't just wrong, it was personal. It was political and it was public. You may have quietly maneuvered to push him out. But the people of St. Helens are not quiet anymore. And fortunately for Lieutenant Hoag, you just helped him win his upcoming case. Counsel, I am ashamed of you. You allowed this to happen. You allowed a vindictive woman who is not only being sued for retaliation, but but may also be under state investigation for collusion to continue influencing decisions she should not have access to. You should have censured her. And you should have prohibited her from participating in the selection of the new police chief. You are aware evidence maybe have been tampered with. Question is yet to be answered where you all will stand in this legal fallout. Because if you think this ends quietly, it does not. Until the lawsuit and possible criminal investigation is resolved, Jen Massey has no business speaking on anything related to law enforcement. And if you continue enabling her, that will follow you, not just her. Here is my suggestion. Resign. If you have even a sliver of self preservation left, step down now. Because the storm that's brewing will not be comfortable. And if I were in your position, I wouldn't dare sit beside someone buried this deep in scandal. Unfortunately, after everything has unfolded, I no longer trust any of you to lead. You let retaliation end a good man's career, and I hope the weight of that decision follows you into every room you walk into.
Alright, next public comment, please.
Brady Preheim. All of you are political. And that's your job, and you should take criticism when you deserve it. The two positions that shouldn't be political are the positions of your finance director and your chief of police. And unfortunately, both of those have happened. Your finance director lied not once, but twice about payments from E two C and about the hundred thousand dollars which you've actually admitted that she lied to on the public record. You realize those recordings are made of that record. We have that on the record that she lied. All of you know that she lied, and if you call me a liar, it will be you that will be facing a defamation lawsuit because it was recorded. Then you have a police chief that also came forward as a whistleblower. The only thing that I say to him is he needs to add a zero to his lawsuit. You all know what you've done. I would have actually liked to hear some of these officers here, but I know that Hoag. Um, was well liked within the department, and I know that he's well liked in the community. And what you have done to him is unconscionable, and none of you should feel good about that. And we knew that it was going to happen. I told you it was going to happen, and you've let that woman who is facing not only criminal charges but a recall. Make a decision for you that you didn't need to make. You could decide today. That you are going to hire Hoag and offer him that position, and that is what should be done. And if you don't, I agree. Um, that you should all resign.
Any other public comment? Seeing up here now.
Adam St. Pierre. Counsel, I just want to say thank you. You know, you guys can never do anything right. My memory is not that great, but I remember about a month, month and a half ago. You know, one of the local cast of characters said you guys should totally recuse yourself from anything to do with choosing a police chief. You guys shouldn't have anything to do with it. You should hire the professionals because they're the ones who know what they're doing. Well, apparently the only professional is one of the cast of characters because you guys went outside. Ask the Oregon Police Chiefs Association or whatever organization that is to help you choose a new police chief to get the most qualified candidate. Apparently that happened, but it wasn't the person the cast of characters wanted. So apparently they don't know what they're doing either. They aren't professionals. So thank you for sticking to your guns. Thank you for actually, you know, doing what was right and, you know, going with the professionals and let the professionals make the decision. I don't know who the most qualified person was. I'm not a professional. I haven't seen any documentation. I haven't seen any scoring sheets. You know, the professionals are who they are. Obviously, the person who got chosen, uh, definitely adds the support of his staff. Other local community members. I saw another police chief out there, another department out there. I'm just observant. I'm not smart. I'm just observant, but you know, you guys can never do anything right. I just want to make sure that you guys understand that. But I appreciate what you guys, you know, how you guys are conducting business and trying to have a, you know, standard set of protocols. Thank you.
Good evening. Um, Madam Mayor and Counsel, my name is Dan Tenell. I represent the St. Helens Police Officers Association. I was not planning to speak tonight, but in light of the preceding three public comments. Um, the St. Helens Police Association wants to thank the council for the way that it conducted the police chief search. Um, my office and the association have been carefully watching the process. We've been involved in the process. Um, the person that was mentioned by the first speaker or the second speaker was not popular amongst the association and many of your officers would have left had that person obtained the job. Um, the association overwhelmingly supported Matt Smith as the best person for the job. Given the internal selection process and that process worked. There were people that were unrelated to the city that had no dog in the fight that overwhelmingly selected that person. So, um, the people that got up here and disparaged you personally and and the the council, they're the ones that should be ashamed of themselves because the process worked. The the people that are keeping this street safe supported the process, endorsed the process and overwhelmingly agree that the selection that was done was the right one for the city to move us forward. Otherwise, you would have lost more people. So thank you from us.
Any other public comments? Anybody online? Yes. Just a second. Steve Toski.
Hello, City Council. It's Steve Toski. I'm, uh, calling for public comment. I think it's ironic that the Police Officers Association representative would be talking at this meeting. And I think that it's really important to understand why the process against ex-chief Hoag was completely unfair, and one of the aspects is the involvement of the Police Officers Association. There is substantial evidence that the Police Officers Association picked Jennifer Massey as a candidate for mayor because they wanted some of the advantages that she would provide them. More money, more officers. Those are her goals. That's what she stated. And the Police Officers Association. There are members of that police off, there there's evidence in the band report that there are divisions within our police department. That. Were caused by Chief Greenway. Trying to push our police department to get things that they thought they were entitled to that the city couldn't afford. That's kind of a very simple way to say it. The fact that the Police Officers Association was involved in the selection process just goes to show that it was a biased process. Nope. Lieutenant Hoag did something that was courageous, and that is he turned in his boss and a mayoral candidate for criminal conduct, conspiring for an election. And the Police Officers Association's hands are all in that. And I cold heartedly disagree with any characterization of this process as being fair. I don't know how a group of people sit down and talk about what's best for a police department when you have a group of folks at the table that uh, were part of the problem in the first place. And what I say to the Police Officers Association representative is that perhaps the people that were willing to quit if Chief Coe were elected chief were the ones that we need to get rid of. And they we'd probably be better off without them. And so the the litigation is going to continue. We're going to continue forward. I hope that our council sticks with our budget confinement of the police and make sure that we maintain that. And, uh, we're going to move forward in this, but unfortunately, we've again sort of booted a process and not made it fair. That's my comment.
Any other public comment online? That it? Right. Um, so, uh, we will move into deliberations. So next one, annexation of property located at three five two six Google for Street with Greg and Amanda.
I would be in favor with moving forward, um, with approving it subject to legal approval of the waiver. Um, actually, I don't know. Hear any of that meeting? Okay.
That's why we were surprised when you walked in because we will. I I think it still needs to be approved with that, you know, subject to approval.
So there's there's two things I have. She's aware of the question. Um, but she punched them to the the land use attorney folks. And this was the, uh, applicability of the one year limitation on petitions to annex. That Ezra. Ezra Bow. Um, so. What I gathered from the discussion. As a potential avenue of approval was, um, confirming the validity of the one year waiver. It's in the file. And two, um, construing the testimony. Um, provided by, um, the owner and petitioner in support of the annexation. Of course, you didn't hear everything that happened.
That I had was one, this is kind of a bit of a precedence because we could have additional ones in the file as we're trying to clean up, you know, certain properties in the city. This one, uh, has a waiver that now is attached to it. Um, but I don't know for me if it you know, stands illegally to circumvent any laws that have been put in place, or if we had to have somebody actually re the petitioner repetition the city for an annexation. So kind of like a setting a precedent case law, so to speak here. So I I would be in favor of the annexation. I would like that to happen for the petitioner. It's just that question on.
So just so I understand, the the petitioner is the applicant who owns the party. And the applicant wants his property annexed, and he's agreeing to a waiver of the one year requirement.
Already did.
He already did. So even though maybe wasn't in the file initially, he is now put in the file and he.
It's it's been in the file.
It was signed at the same time that the original petition was filed back in nineteen ninety nine.
A waiver, what?
Yes, ma'am.
And was it attached to the staff report?
So it was in the record and in the file. It just wasn't in the staff report.
That's correct.
And so and now what is the question?
Whether or not to approve it or not with the condition of the waiver, um, we were presented with some information that uh, were not lawyers. We, yeah, we were like a whole bunch of laws and having or those types of sound. So you just want to make sure that what we're doing is in all of the generally doesn't like to. That waiver. The annex into.
Waiver.
And that it's it's cohesive with our charter and our law.
It's not something that I can evaluate here, but I don't I don't know. So I haven't, I'm not familiar with the information, but I if the applicant is not objecting, are there any people in the are there any people on the record that were objecting?
Neutral.
Nobody was objecting.
Nobody was objecting, just providing neutral testimony of having petitioners and a precedent set from two thousand sixteen.
So it's it's the waivers in the record, the applicant wants it, the city wants it, and nobody's objecting, then it's fine to approve.
We're.
Okay, great.
Filing the correct statute. Filing the correct statute.
I'll make a motion to annex the property located on three, five, two, six, two, First Street.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion in a second. Counselor Sundeep.
Counselor President Chilton.
Aye.
Counselor Gunderson.
Aye.
Counselor Hubbard.
Aye.
I myself. Start with a second. I look that way and then look how I get them. All right. Number two, annexation of property located at five, eight, nine, zero, nine, Burlong Park Street.
I'll make a motion to approve that annexation at five, eight, nine, zero, nine, Burlong Park Street.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Counselor Sundeep.
Aye.
Counselor President Chilton.
Aye.
Counselor Gunderson.
Aye.
Counselor Hubbard.
Aye.
I am, I myself. Ordinance, we have ordinance number three, three, zero, nine, an ordinance to defend the city of St. Helens, zoning district map for certain property at seventy or seventeen seventy-one Columbia Boulevard from the general commercial G C zone to the Holton Business District H B D zone.
Final reading needs a motion. Anyone else want to make any motions?
Motion to approve ordinance number three, three, zero, nine.
Second.
All right, we have a motion second. Counselor Sundeep.
Aye.
Counselor President Chilton.
Aye.
Counselor Gunderson.
Aye.
Counselor Hubbard.
Aye.
And I myself. Move on to approve and are authorized for signature lease with Columbia Learning Center for Makerspace Expansion.
Make a motion to approve and authorize for signature the lease with the Columbia Learning Center for Makerspace Expansion.
Second.
Now, we have a motion second. Counselor Sundeep.
Aye.
Counselor President Chilton.
Aye.
Counselor Gunderson.
Aye.
Counselor Hubbard.
Aye.
And I myself. Uh, number five, lease with St. Helens Senior Center.
Motion to approve and authorize for signature the lease with the St. Hel- St. Helens Senior Center.
Second. Motion second, we have Counselor Sundeep.
Aye.
Counselor President Chilton.
Aye.
Counselor Gunderson.
Aye.
Counselor Hubbard.
Aye.
And I as well. Consent agenda for acceptance. We have number six, budget committee meeting dated May first, twenty twenty-five.
I'll make a motion to consent agenda items, uh, six as read.
Second.
So we have a motion in a second. Counselor Sundeep.
Aye.
Counselor President Chilton.
Aye.
Counselor Gunderson.
Aye.
Counselor Hubbard.
Aye.
And I as well. And that puts us into work session items.
Oh, we have it. Did I just, okay. Seven, eight, nine.
Oh, yeah, we have it. It's another one. So we have consent agenda approval number seven. Uh, council, city council minutes dated May twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. Uh, number eight, O L C C licenses, and number nine, accounts payable bill list.
And approve consent agenda items seven through nine is read.
We have a second. Counselor Sundeep.
Aye.
Counselor President Chilton.
Aye.
Counselor Gunderson.
Aye.
Counselor Hubbard.
Um, I uh, abstained from number eight, but I agree with seven.
You need to peel that out or is it, I can just abstain from that?
I think you can.
We can just abstain.
You're good.
It's, yes.
I was I myself. All right, that takes us into work session action items. And so at this time, I'm going to declare a potential conflict interest due to my husband's employment as a St. Helens police officer. However, I make it and act impartially and will continue to make decisions in the best interest of the city.
Second it and discuss it. Um, I move to confirm the city's administrator's appointment of Sergeant Matthew Smith as the chief of police contingent upon the successful completion of a comprehensive background investigation and psychological and medical examination as appropriate. Question? Um, so I'm not privy to know much about how the interviews went. I was hoping that we might be able to share that publicly. Now that they're complete.
Um, before we start, I would like to talk about the process. Um, there are, there's a lot of interest in this process. And before that, I just wanted to confirm, Mayor Massey, are you participating in this discussion or are you abstaining?
I'm not going to participate in the discussion.
Okay, and and are you participating in the vote?
Uh, it is not my intent at this time.
Um. So, city council, um, asked staff to develop an independent recruitment process to fill the chief of police position. Um. They directed staff to receive guidance from the Oregon Association of Chiefs of Police to help guide this process. Um, so that there is, there were chiefs of police that have experience with selecting a chief of police and with identifying how this process should go. Um, because of uh, the concern and the importance of this process, they asked the city attorney's office to assist to ensure the process was fair and unbiased, um, because that was very important to city council. The Oregon Association of Chiefs of Police recommended, um, uh, an evaluation panel that consisted of five members. Um, they helped the city, uh, find two chiefs of police outside of the community. Those were the chiefs from Camby and the city of Wilsonville. And, um, the city also Sheriff Pixley from Columbia County also offered to participate in the evaluation panel. And then the Oregon Association of Chiefs of Police felt that it was reasonable and prudent to have the police association, a representative of the police association also participate in the panel. And then for us, uh, city councillor involvement, Counselor Hubbard participated. So there were five voting members, two chiefs of police, Sheriff Pixley, uh, the five members were the chief of police from Camby, the chief of police from Wilsonville, Sheriff Pixley, um, an association member, and Counselor Hubbard. Um, the Oregon Associations of Chief of Police recommended that there will be a written component to the evaluation, and they helped, uh, develop written questions that the three internal candidates responded to. And they also, uh, helped recommend interview questions. The evaluation panel was also involved in suggesting interview questions that they felt were important to help evaluate the next chief of police for the city of St. Helens. Um, the written questions were evaluated over the past month, and then the interviews were held on Thursday, last Thursday, May twenty-ninth. Um. So that was the process that was to date, uh, and the evaluation committee came out, they ranked all of the candidates and scored the candidates, both their written and their interviews, and came out with an overwhelming highest strength selector, uh, selection that they felt would be a excellent candidate for the city of St. Helens. And so that's the end of my report to explain the process, um, that was developed. Um, with the help of the Oregon Association's Chiefs of Police. And I just say, because I was participating by moderating the interviews, it was really great to have these people come and volunteer their time, um, to help the city of St. Helens choose the next chief of police.
Ashley. I'd like to thank Ashley for putting this together because, uh, it was from what I was concerned, it was, it was very complete. And the people involved, um, I was the only civilian on there. And I couldn't talk to talk like the other chiefs could. They're in similar sized towns. They all spoke, uh, they had good questions of all the candidates. Um, for me, all I saw was three great guys. And that I didn't have, I listened to them of what they were saying. And, uh, it was, it was quite an eye-opener for the questions they were asking and how they would ask somebody to be a chief of the city. Um, so I just felt that it was, it couldn't have been better as far as, uh, the process to go. Um, there's no bias involved at all. Um, and, um, I was pleased to be part of it, um, although I was really, you know, just civilian. I don't, I don't deal with the cops and I don't know um, how they all operate, but listening to these other chiefs that are in charge of their towns was really eye-opener and and the comments they made to make their decision, um, was so solid that I think what we got was, was, was great, so.
Recorded.
This is not time for public.
No, it was not.
Not a question from him. Anyway, um.
Thank you.
I, I really thought it was positive. Um, we, it's something we had to do after the last election. So. So, this, this is the right way to go and and we did it. And it, um, you know, we, the comment was that we should have just hired the, the acting chief. Um. But he showed up, uh, just like all, they all did and answered the questions and 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 the interview was great with him. And so it wasn't a matter of, 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 uh, you know, not letting him approach the city and and he did his best shot. They all did their best shot and I would, any one of them would have been great, so. Surprise, huh?
Well, I think this was, uh, this was important, um, to kind of let another panel take it and and see where it went, um, to keep it as fair and honest as possible. And I think you hit the nail on the head. I think it was. Um, I was, uh, you know, I was looking to appoint Joe. Get going. I cannot go against a panel that makes that recommendation. If if it would have been anybody else, I would have gone with their decision as well. So that's what I'm intending to do.
I agree. I feel proud that we had three great candidates that it made it difficult to choose from. And I just want to see the city move in a positive direction. And I feel like um, the three candidates that we have understand the city and understand the culture that we have here. And I, I think we are moving forward with a great candidate that's going to serve our city very well.
Agree. Um, gonna trust the, trust the process. So I appreciate those who participated and, uh, originally it was recommended that maybe I should be on that panel as a, as the police liaison. And, uh, I think I was a little biased, so I opted out. And I'm grateful to you, Russ, for stepping into that.
Thanks.
Yeah, you're welcome. But no, I I agree. I think we had three, three great guys here and very well experienced to have done great things and devoted a lot of time to to our community. So I appreciate all three of them and, uh, look forward to working with our new police chief.
Association's going to do a year review, um, on the, on their, uh, new chief.
Um, well, it was, it was recommended by the Oregon Association of Chiefs of Police, um, that the city directs the new chief of police, um, to cut, to have the O A C P form a transition team to to guide the new chief of police, evaluate the chief, the police department as it currently sits. And then at that time, they would also identify strengths and weaknesses and work with the new police chief over the course of the year to help, um, shore up any weaknesses that they find and just help that first year transition. Uh, help the chief of police in that process. So that's something that's been recommended for you, you, uh, direct the next police chief.
I do want to honor, um, Chief Hoag. He's been twenty-five years plus in this town and what he's done and, uh, just the process and we are.
There's no further discussion. All right, so we have a motion second, uh, Counselor Sundeep.
Aye.
Counselor, uh, excuse me, Counsel President Chilton. All right, Counselor Gunderson.
Aye.
Uh, Counsel Hubbard, and I'm abstaining. All right. Thank you. All right, um, so my, uh, potential conflict that I have already declared, um, stands in, in this one on the potential conflict as well. Um, so you want to take this one, Counsel President?
I move to confirm the city administrator's appointment of Sergeant Matthew Smith as the acting chief of police effective upon the retirement of interim chief Joe Ho and until such time as the council confirms the appointment of the chief of police or otherwise directs.
Second.
We have a motion second. Counselor Sundeep.
Aye.
Counsel President Chilton.
Aye.
Counselor Gunderson.
Aye.
Counsel Hubbard. And I'm abstaining. Okay. So that moves us on to reap, um, reappointment to Columbia Foundation Board.
I move to reappoint Counselor Gunderson as the city representative on the Columbia Foundation Board for another two-year term.
We have a motion second. Counselor Sundeep.
Aye.
Counsel President Chilton.
Aye.
Counsel Gunderson.
Aye.
Counsel Hubbard. Yeah, you accepted. Thank you. Thank you, Mark. You did a great job.
There's another one in the back.
Yes. Uh, wow, I'm excited about this. All right, so. You know what? Counsel Sundeep, why don't you take?
Want me to read this?
Oh, yeah. I think Burke said.
Yeah, you're, you're, yes, you're reading it.
Oh, yeah.
Oh. Can I bring him up here? Ron, can you come up here?
I want to make sure you can hear us.
Yeah, I want to make sure you can hear. Can you come up here? You want to make sure you can hear.
There's one. Thank you.
Mr. Traumletts, I'm going to read this statement, um, primarily for you. Uh, can you hear me? Okay.
Sorry.
Okay. "We appreciate Mr. Traumletts' attention to the deficit, defect issues related to the reservoir. At the time Mr. Traumletts first submitted his request for the report, we were advised by the attorney handling the case not handling the case not to release the underlying construction defect report on the basis that it was attorney-client per document. That decision was upheld by the district attorney. We knew the issue again and determined that in the interest of transparency, we would like to release the report to the public. We heard Mr. Traumletts in the, in the last public comment period say that because it, because the contractors in the settlement agreement did not admit liability, Mr. Traumletts believed that must mean that the city had liability. Mr. Traumletts said that he was requesting the Walker report to determine if it stated the city was at fault. We hope that the, let's see, we hope that the release of the Walker report will show to Mr. Traumletts status, to Mr. Traumletts's satisfaction that the city was not found to be at fault for the reservoir defect and that the release of the report resolves this concern. We want to add that it is common in the settlement agreements for parties not to admit liability even though they are agreeing to pay damages. In this case, the contractors declined to admit liability and agreed to pay the city six hundred thousand dollars in damages. I make a motion, I'm going to make a motion, I move the authorize the city administrator to release the Walker reports."
Okay.
We have a motion. We have a second. Counselor Sundeep.
Aye.
Counsel President Chilton.
Aye.
Counsel Gunderson. Counsel Hubbard. And I as well.
Thank you. So we did, I get to see the report.
You get it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
That one just felt so good. All right, so we'll move over to municipal member reports. Counsel Sundeep, you want to start?
Sure.
History today?
Not to.
Hanging in, okay.
Um, I just wanted to start out by thanking our, the committee. Not always the most fun process, but a very important one. So, thank you to our budget committee and all the staff and everybody that participated in, in that process. Um, Parks and Trails Commission hosted a cleanup just this past weekend, uh, Saturday at the Japanese Gardens in Cormick Park. Um, still doing lots of great things in that commission. Um, I also wanted to thank Joe Ho for nearly three decades of the St. Helens Police Department and also the community. Um, for me, when I, when I think of Joe, I think of stability. And I'm glad he was here in the position that he was during a time when I think our commi- our community really needed stability.
So.
Um, again, I was a little biased and Mark and I felt very strongly that he would have made a, a great police chief and uh, I still think he, he would make a great police chief and thought very hard for them. But again, um, I'm going to trust the process and I appreciate those who participated in that. I wish Joe well in his retirement and look forward to working with Matt and getting to know him better. Um, as he leads our police department. As he leads our police department.
Councillor President Chilton.
I didn't have much to report, I really wanted to focus on some of the positive things that we have, you know, happening in the city as far as thirteen nights. Starting back tomorrow at the river, spent a lot of work to bring it back here and you guys see all the work going on in downtown, so. Just want to thank Treadway and John, I know John's been working really hard to make, make this happen and get it back down here. So I'm very excited and I encourage you guys to come out and celebrate with us and we're going to have a ribbon cutting ceremony coming up as well, which is. Been a long, long time in the works and it's a good time for us to celebrate all the work that has went on down here to, you know, better the city of St. Helens. And Community Day in the Park is coming up as well, so another way to celebrate and focus on the positive things that we're doing in the city of St. Helens. And I think sometimes we forget when there's so much mud and, you know, mud in the water. All the good things that are happening and the growth that the city has seen and the support to the seniors and the kids and the families. And so I just want to encourage people to be a part of the good parts of the city as well.
Um, I have a few things, one, I was actually going to mention the positivity and all the events coming up because it seems to be. Every single weekend, something a little bit for everybody, the only other one was a Kiwanis Parade, I think it's on the twenty first, so that should be a. A great event, get the youngsters out there and then we'll have something for the fourth of July as well.
I did say drive the Mack truck, I'll be in Washington. I will not be driving.
So you don't want to drive the truck anymore? I can't drive a stick, so. So you don't want me driving.
Okay, so.
I'm going to drive a city truck, it just won't be the Mack truck.
Okay, well, I'm not driving that one either, so.
So that's something, I'm submitting the application next week for the city's entry. But I had you down for passing out flyers.
I'm down with the flyers.
Yeah, there's plenty of, there's like, we can put you in the duck truck.
Yeah, I'll drive it.
Yeah, it's just, I talked to Ethan and he just needs people to go ahead of time. So that he can show them how to work the equipment.
Okay, so we need to go stop in?
Yeah, at the shops and let him go.
Wait, she's going to have a five minute.
Tutorial.
Think that's a problem?
Intimidated by it, but I'll go talk to Ethan, thank you for that.
Maybe drive it around the parking lot a little bit, pick it up for a touch drive first.
On the city property in case I do any damage.
Yeah, so, uh, well, that's exciting, um, also congratulations to Matthew Smith on his recommendation to service the next. St. Helens Police Chief, I'm confident that he'll lead the department with strength, professional integrity. Also want to recognize Joe Ho for his twenty-seven years of service, that's a very long time to the city of St. Helens, his commitment to public safety in our community. I'm also excited about all the forward progress with this police station, you know, we've sat there for, stagnant for quite a while, we've lost quite a bit of money on that one. And I like the fact that this council is, you know, asking all the right questions, doing our due diligence and then not kicking the can down with us. So it's exciting to see how that's unfolding, participating in those meetings with councillor Hubbard. Especially, you know, looking at any way that we can get a building built but reduce the fees and be in with budget. Taking the budget, I think that that's important. And then, uh, I wanted to thank staff, Kathy, Lisa for always having our stuff ready, I say that every single time. But I don't think people realize the amount of work that you guys put into putting packets together and giving information. And the rest of the staff, the police and public works and just staff in general. And then also the council, like, I think that we've been operating really well, we always don't agree on everything, but the way that we treat each other with professionalism and respect. I, I mean, this is what I think a council should be. And then lastly, I mean, a huge congratulations to the St. Helens girls softball team, the Lady Lions, they had their victory over Pendleton last night. Went watch, saw the new field over there, and now they're going to advance to play Astoria on June seventh at University of Oregon, so if you're up for a road trip. Support our Lady Lions out there, so there's a lot of positivity and anyway, a lot of things going on in our city that I think that we.